So, I guess I, you're right, called the meeting to order and I get to be acting mayor. Very exciting. And I guess we'll start with the swearing in of the new council. Bye. Do we go out there? We didn't really like choreograph.
Yeah, no, usually we go out.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Is there a protocol in terms of order? You can do both at the same time. You can do them separately. They just need to put their own name in the name.
Mark.
Do you want to swear?
I have to do it too.
I have to do it too.
Oh, you did.
Yeah.
Really sorry.
Well, you're, you need to go separately, but yes, he is getting sworn in tonight.
Really?
Yes.
Wow.
Anybody else?
I was going to say.
I'll do this time. Should we all do it together?
You want to just all do it together? So. Chris? Well, Ken has to go separately. But our hand on. Council folks can go. You can affirm or swear and there is no bylaw necessary unless you choose freedom, you know, we're all about that. And I think you just raise your right hand or something and say, "I solemnly swear" or affirm.
I solemnly affirm.
Well, do we, you're supposed to say our name. Yeah, you put your name in that little name.
Maybe we should start. Oh, there is no, okay. Sorry, you can tell I'm acting.
I'm not acting right here. Okay, so. I, Karen Wintrow.
I'm Mary Ann McQueen.
I'm Brian House.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Counsel.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Counsel.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So I guess this is the, uh, the duties of the Office of Village Manager.
There's a case there.
As long as they wouldn't all sprint.
You won't pick your sprint. Okay, so.
I, Kent Bristol.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
Obey the laws of the United States.
And of the State of Ohio.
And of the State of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Village Manager.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Village Manager.
Well, here ends my acting life. There might be a marriage.
I was going to say, does anybody want to get married?
Yeah, well, I'm at it. You know, I've never done that, but you have the power vested in you temporarily. All right, um, so I guess let's go with the roll call.
Here we go.
Roll call, all right. Ashland.
Yes.
Wintrow.
Yes.
Sims.
Here.
House.
Here.
McQueen.
Here.
Also President, Chief of Police Anthony Pettiford and Interim Village Manager Kent Bristol. All right, so our first order of business is to vote for President and Vice President of Council. And I would like to nominate Karen Wintrow for Pettiford.
Second.
Oh, do I have to say? I guess I need to. That would be fine.
Okay, is there any, any discussion?
I think it's an excellent choice.
Great, well, then I guess, uh, this is just a regular vote. Okay, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, well.
I'd like to nominate Lori Ashland for Vice President.
Second.
I accept. Okay, um, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, aye, I guess. And, uh, so you don't hear any, uh, opposed, I think I heard all the voices, I won't give you the chance to change. Um, so I guess what we'll do now is Karen and I will switch places.
Oh, regardless of what time it comes.
Exactly. And water and glasses. Yeah, I know, my cord. You can do it without spilling and extra credit. We'll be amazed. Sorry, guys. And on next week's grilling episode of Keystone Council.
Okay, um, welcome aboard everybody and welcome everyone. If you would please turn off your cell phones, silence your cell phones if any of you have them. First, we have announcements. Does anybody, um, at the table have any announcements?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, actually anybody watching has already figured this out, but, uh, Channel 5, if you are not able to view the village council meetings right now, um, you can still view them without the digital converter on 99.1, Channel 99.1. We're not exactly sure how long that's going to happen or be available, um, and we plan to report more information about, um, what's going on with, uh, community access as soon as we have that.
Any citizens have any announcements? Um, review of the minutes from the November 4th meeting. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. And that's it. That's it, yes. Have a motion to accept?
So who?
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, you can't. We're here. So just for us.
Now, what's interesting, what if there were any other people?
Oh, wow. Yeah, that's a good question.
Um, now we're reviewing the agenda just to look at, um, what's on the agenda for this evening to see if there is any, um, uh, any changes or additions. Um, I believe that we will be taking off ordinance 2013-27 about Glen Forest Cemetery. We will have it as a discussion item under new business.
Karen, I will have, uh, four down the list for, um, relations.
Okay, yeah, those are on there.
Anything else? I have a question, um, and I don't know if it exactly goes under agenda planning, but in the minutes from the last meeting, uh, the presentation by the Wright State students was passed off to Kent to, uh, and, and Chris to work on some recommendations of possible word changes. And so my question is, when that kind of thing occurs, when, when we pass off something, how do we know when we hear that?
Well, usually happens.
Not that, I know this is not like, yeah, I mean, I think it depends, it, it probably would, and that happened, I think, at the time, um, after the presentation. I don't know that we actually had added it to agenda items, um, to future agenda items. I guess, you know, we would probably want to discuss, maybe hear from Kent, how much time he thought, I don't, I don't know that at this point, um, it's going to rise to, to getting onto the agenda anytime soon. I mean, we've got a lot of, but, but that's really up to council.
Okay. Lori, did you want to report on the additions and communications?
Um, well, we, um, will probably be discussing most of the first two. One is, um, it's identified as Megan Bachman. She's the Secretary of, uh, maybe, or, um, I am blanking. Community Resources. I'm sorry. Uh, Community Resources, and she offered, they collectively offered the chronology and letter endorsing, uh, that council continued to support the CDE and, uh, passed a resolution to fund the CDE. And Bill Bevco also strongly endorsed that we, um, that we fund the CDE. We also, uh, the other three are just newsletters from Green County and the mayor's monthly report in Cities and Villages magazine.
Actually, can I just, uh, add something about Bill Bevco's letter? Just for clarity, the last paragraph, um, says the desire of the CB. It's in the first line, and I'm sure he meant the CR, so just, so nobody's confused that, you know, we're talking about Community Resources there. Thought it'd be good to mention that typo.
Um, so then we'll move on to public hearings and legislation. First, a second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2013-26, 2014 temporary budget.
And do you want this as normal or titled?
Um, let's, there's a lot of people here, let's read it. I mean, you have to read it. The summaries, just the summaries.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah. Otherwise. Whereas the ordinance is adopted to make temporary appropriations for expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, now therefore the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1, to provide for expenses and other expenditures of the said Village of Yellow Springs during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, the following sums are hereby set aside and temporarily appropriated as follows. The total general fund appropriations, the amended budget is $3,493,428. The 2014 amended budget is $873,357. Section 2, that they be temporarily appropriated from the following special revenue funds. The 2013 amended budget is $1,363,619. The 2014 amended budget is $340,905. Section 3, that they be temporarily appropriated from the debt service funds. The 2013 total is $535,274. The 2014 amended budget is $133,819. Section 4, that they be temporarily appropriated from the capital projects funds. The 2013 amended budget is $531,000. And the 2014 amended budget is $132,750. Section 5, that they be temporarily appropriated from the enterprise funds. The total enterprise fund appropriations for 2013 is $6,790,504. The 2014 amended budget is $1,696,751. Section 6, that the temporary appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows. The grand total temporary appropriations for all funds, 2013 amended budget is $12,713,825. The 2014 amended budget is $3,177,581. Section 5, I'm sorry, section 7, the finance director and village manager are hereby authorized to draw warrants on the village treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations. Upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by an ordinance and council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except persons employed by authority of and in accordance with such ordinance. Section 8, this ordinance shall take effect at the earliest period allowed by law.
Do I have a motion?
So who?
Second.
So what this is, um, we have to have a, a budget submitted to the Green County Auditor for 2014. We haven't gone, because of the election, this is a temporary budget. We haven't gone through budget process. That's actually something we're going to be talking about later tonight, what that schedule will be. But these, the 2014 amended budget is simply for the first quarter, so we'll, and it's based upon our, our year-end, um, budget for 2013. Um, so it's, um, it's kind of a pro forma thing, um, and, um, at least, you know, like I said, basing it on what we've already done, um, in 2013. Um, it's a public hea, does anybody have any comments? Any council members have comments? I'll open the public hearing. Comments from citizens? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and, um, court please call them.
All right. Two of you switch your name plates, because I'm getting a little.
Oh.
Moment, having a moment there. Thank you very much. Sims.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Ashland.
Yes.
Wintrow.
Yes.
Let's see, the next piece of legislation is emergency reading of ordinance 2013-28, supplemental appropriations for fourth quarter.
Whereas ordinance 2012-28 was adopted to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Yellow Springs, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2013, and whereas village council makes supplemental appropriations to reflect adjustments which occurred throughout the fiscal year, and whereas this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure, it necessary to preserve the public interest and provide for a special emergency in the operation of village services, such emergency being the urgent necessity to provide for legitimate expenditures and then the general appropriation, now therefore the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section 1, to provide for expenses and other expenditures of the said Village of Yellow Springs during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2013, the following sums are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows. Section 2, that they be appropriated from the general fund. The total general fund appropriations, the current budget is $3,449,073. There is no change. Section 3, that they be appropriated from the following special revenue funds. The current budget is $1,363,619. The amendment is $13,000. The amended budget is $1,363,619. Section 4, that they be appropriated from the debt service funds. The current budget is $535,274. And there is no change. Section 5, that they be appropriated from the capital project funds. The current budget is $531,000. The amendment is a negative $223,913. And the amended budget is $307,087. Section 6, that they be appropriated from the enterprise funds. The current budget is $6,790,504. The amendment is a negative $908,000. The amended budget is $5,882,504. Section 7, that the appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows. The grand total appropriations for all funds, the current budget is $6,790,504. The amendment is a negative $908,000. The amended budget is $5,882,504. Section 7, that the appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows. Grand total appropriation of all funds, current budget is $12,603,570. The amendment is negative $1,118,913. The amended budget is a positive $11,484,657. Section 8, the finance director and the village manager are hereby authorized to draw warrants on the village treasury for payments for any of the foregoing appropriations. Upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by an ordinance and council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except persons employed by authority of and in accordance with such ordinance. Section 9, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure for reasons set forth from the preamble here to, which shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Do I have a motion?
So who?
Second.
Um, Kent, I'll turn this over to you to explain some of the changes.
Yeah, these are just adjustments, uh, necessary to keep us in the light through the end of the year. And in a couple of cases where they are negative, they are projects that were funded and are not going to be executed by year. Actually, as the capital overhaul reduces.
Can, can you explain the solid waste, um, change, the need for this additional $70,000?
Uh, yeah, I, Judy, I think you may have talked to Nicole about that, but my understanding is a simply different budget enough for full year structure. And I can't, I can't explain why it is.
And actually, can we just go through them real quickly? Um, because I see the notes, but, um, could you just?
I think that's probably good for the council members to understand.
So we start out with $12,000. Is that, is that again just a case of not budgeting enough for salaries or?
Yes, exactly, yes.
And what does it mean an appropriate donation for the youth program?
The $1,000, that's in the Brian Youth Program. I believe the donation was appropriated to, I mean, I think that's shorthand for appropriate a donation to.
Yeah, he said he gave us money we hadn't anticipated as a gift, got story of the year we'd raised in the appropriation of the trade account.
Okay.
Okay. And then just go through the other two. Reduce the appropriation level in the public works.
Are you, the $223,000, let's say?
Under facilities improvement. It's a negative number.
Yes. Do you know the answer to that, Judy?
I do not.
This all happened Friday when I was off for the doctor's appointment, so, uh, I'm taking this on faith from our finance director.
Yeah, I mean, these are, this is all really typical, Brian. I mean, we do appropriations, probably at least once a quarter, if not, um, if not more often than that, because, um, you know, we move things from one fund to the other or, um, something wasn't, um, there, there just isn't the money immediately there. So, you know, I think the big, the big numbers here, public works, water distribution, um, I don't, I think that actually might have been, I'm not sure what project, but we obviously appropriated close to a million dollars for a project in the water fund that we didn't, that we didn't do. And that's why that went down by close to a million dollars. Um, the public works, I'm assuming is the same thing, that, that there was a project set that, that didn't get done.
We could, we could always have the finance director write us a note for the next time to, to better explain those numbers for us.
Uh, Judy, did I do, yeah, this has to have a, a public hearing. Um, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing and hearing, no comments, I will close the public hearing and ask Judy to call the roll.
All right, Ashland.
Here.
Sorry.
House.
Uh, yes.
Sims.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Wintrow.
Yes. Oh, sorry. The next piece, the next piece of legislation is Resolution 2013-46, approving then announced certificates for the fourth quarter.
Okay, whereas the finance director has pending invoices each exceeding $3,000 for services or supplies that were ordered and delivered prior to obtaining certification from the fiscal officer that funds were available, and whereas both section 5705.41 of the Act of the revised Code or C and Village Policy require prior certification of the availability of funds for major purposes, and whereas the, or C provides an exception allowing retroactive certification when the requisite funds are available over the time of purchase commitment was made and when payment is due, known as a then-announced certificate. And whereas the finance director states that sufficient unsecured money is and was available both at the time of purchase was made and at the time of payment was due for the obligations listed below, ANA safety, $3,245, and clean incorporated, $4,319.04. Now therefore, the council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that. Section 1, the finance director is hereby authorized and directed to issue then-announced certificates, the obligations listed above and pay them from the appropriate accounts upon receiving properly executed then-announced certificates. Section 2, this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon passage.
Do I have a motion, please?
So who?
Second. So this involves, um, this is, is kind of a housekeeping measure to, um, it, I think it described it pretty well, just to state that the money was available. Expenditures were made, the money was available. It was a little off process, there is to be, uh, uh, purchase orders and, and some of these were done without purchase orders. The money had already been budgeted and it had been appropriated. It just, the, the proper process wasn't followed. Um, there is, the, the Ohio auditor does allow us a process to fix it. That's the then and now certificate, and that's what we're doing. It, it was probably a, um, it was an unfortunate circumstance that happened with, um, past staff that, um, we've already talked about in meetings with Kent that we will not allow to happen again. It's, it's a process that needs to be done properly, and that will be something that we'll be working with our new finance director on, so that we won't be doing then-announced certificates on a regular basis, um, like we have been the past few meetings, so. Any questions from council?
It's, I call it the Ohio two-step. Somebody asked, says that, uh, a staffer wants to buy something, pay money, and they come in and they check, the bu, the money's there, the budget is covered, so they go out and make the purchase. And in Ohio, even if you issue a purchase order, you also need to have the finance person issue a certificate saying, yes, the money is there and paid for the purchase order. Seems like duplication may, but it's what the law in Ohio requires. So, as Karen said, we're covering our tracks.
Any comments from citizens? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Karen, I apologize, this is, this was not clear, but if you, I'm going to hand this down to you, this was actually in the packet, and that is the explanation, and I had to put those two together, it goes with.
Right, I, that was, it wasn't a packet.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, we got those.
It was, that they were very cryptic.
Okay, okay. More cryptic than you wanted.
All right. Uh, now is the time in the agenda where we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. Paul was there, nobody's on there. Anybody have any comments or concerns they want to bring to council? State your name and speak into the microphone.
I will.
Thank you.
Let's make sure it works. We've gotten off to a good start this year, I'm glad to see all you new members.
State your name.
But please use the damn microphones, if not, use your outside voice, because there's many people here, cannot hear, and I wear my mariennes most of the time, but I'll be damned if I can't hear what's going on up here. So try it. If not, I'm going to see about getting these damn things replaced, that's all I've got to say. Ted Campbell's name, please, correctly.
T E M P B E L L.
Thanks, Ted. Are the mics on?
They are. They are on. They seem exceptionally weak tonight.
Yeah, and we've had them adjusted, that's, that's, we've had them adjusted, and then when they were adjusted, it seemed like it was a little much, and it's, it's tough to get them, um, fit, so. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the schedule for hiring of the manager. Oh, excuse me, oh, I'm sorry, Joe, I'm sorry.
Uh, John Edwards, I have a concern about the, um, tornado sirens, or the emergency sirens in town, and, uh, we just had a tornado alert last night, um, and I don't know where the siren is located relative to the high school, where the nearest siren is. However, I could barely hear it, barely, and this was, you know, I realize my windows are closed in my house because it's, you know, it's cold and blowing out, and, um, if I had been asleep, and I was kind of half-dozing, I would not have been aware that there was a tornado warning. So I'm concerned about the location and the volume of our emergency sirens, and that's something that the fire department might need to look into, or maybe the village, um, in conjunction with the emergency services. Thank you.
John, where do you live?
I live right across from high school.
Okay.
On the corner, West South College and East End.
The nearest, the nearest one's probably Bill Duncan Park.
I mean, I know we went through this about a year or so ago, when we found out that there were, that there were sirens that were down, that weren't operational. As far as I know, those were all fixed. Now, I don't know, and I think that, but, does the PD handle that?
Yeah, we do.
Tony?
Well, we checked.
Okay, so, I mean, and I hear-
John, where do you live?
I live right across from the high school.
Okay.
On the corner, West South College and East End.
The nearest one's probably built up in the park.
I mean, I know we went through this about a year or so ago, when we found out that there were, that there were sirens that were down, that weren't operational. As far as I know, those were all fixed. Now, I don't know, and I think that, does the PD handle that?
Yeah, we do.
Tony?
Well, we checked on them.
Okay, so, I mean, and I hear, you know, both at our house and where I work, they're very close, so I always hear them, but I can, I can...
I stepped outside to see what was going on, and the siren was still sounding, and it was still not very loud. And it wasn't that there was wind noise that would have been covering it.
Right.
So I'm concerned about, you know, if, if people who are at all hard of hearing, they never would have heard that siren, ever, if they lived near where I do.
So is that something for Kent, Kent and Tony can follow up on? Thanks.
I might make a comment just to follow up on what Joe said, Patty Gannis. Also, when the sirens sound, there doesn't seem to be a signal for all clear. I don't know if there's a way to do that or not. The other thing I thought of was that it might be good to, when we do have the siren, to also have a code read, to augment the people who, who aren't so close to the sirens.
Both of those can be followed up by staff. Any, anybody else? Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the schedule, I guess schedule and also just process for hiring of the manager. It's something we clearly were waiting for the new council for. We talked about it, I think at the last meeting or two meetings ago, it was on our agenda. I provided council members with the items that were in that packet, which was basically the documents from the process when we hired Mark Kunda. And I think that when, when we did talk about it previously, I think most of us on council felt that that was a good process. The one thing we were, we were considering is with a, if we did hire a consultant, would that be a consultant that was primarily involved with municipal administration, or would it be somebody that might have a broader, broader experience? So I guess, you know, you guys, this is, this is the first time for the new council members to, to have this, take up this discussion, so I think it would be good to hear from, from you all as to what, what your thoughts were, and recognize that it's something we've really got to get underway relatively quickly.
Well, there are two things that I think about. One of those is, I think it's really important the way we put out that notice, and, I mean, I just started looking at what we did last time, but I do want to put some careful thought into how we put out the, the call for resumes and applicants. And the second thing, and I do see it was contemplated last time, and I think it's really important, is that we do have citizen involvement from the very beginning of the process. And to me, that includes vetting the applicants, helping us to interview, et cetera. I would also recommend that we, I think the school district did an amazing job of attracting a great superintendent for the village, and I know there's some, some expertise there that I'd like to borrow from. I've, I've talked to Sylvia Ellison on the school board, but I'd like to get some more information, just to see everything they did.
I would be interested in the consultant that they used. I know, I think that they've used that person twice, and I would be interested definitely in that consultant. I don't know if they're strictly educationally oriented or not.
I hadn't seen this before, and I haven't really been thinking in specifics. I agree that talking, I talked with one of the school board members also, who talked about how important it was to make personal contacts, try non-conditional routes, so I think that that would be important. I think utilizing Kent will be very helpful. I also think it's important for the council to maybe make available to the community and possibly have some discussion on this ideal manager thing, because...
This was just from last time, this is not...
Well, at, at any rate, clearly we've had some difficulties, regardless of where the difficulties originated with village managers, and I think that having some kind of discussion so that the community can be involved, what are our expectations as village managers, what is the role of village manager, what is the role vis-à-vis the community as well as council, to sort of frame, frame that kind of discussion as we go into the hiring process. And in regard to using a consultant, I guess I would want to understand what exactly the consultant would be doing.
You know, I see the consultant basically is doing the legwork. Our staff doesn't have the capacity to do, to do the legwork of vetting. We'll probably get 50 resumes, and I can tell you, all 50 of those resumes will not be, will not be candidates that we'll probably want to, to interview. But some, so somebody needs to, to read all those. I think, I think just kind of establishing what that process is, what that outreach is, and that's why I am interested in, in the consultant. You know, the consultant that we used, we used last time, really, he, he's a local guy, he has a lot of contacts, but it's all in municipal or in, in government administration, or public administration. So I think we've decided that it would be good to outreach beyond that, beyond that. And so I don't know if, I don't know if we're talking about it just a regular headhunter, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I really don't know. There were two, two processes ago, I guess it was the process when Eric Swanson was hired, that was, there wasn't a consultant used for that. That was totally done internally between, there was a committee of staff, citizens, and council members. And I personally think it's too much, I think, I think vetting candidates is too much to expect of a volunteer committee. I think it needs to be, there were issues with qualifications, there were issues with not having done adequate background checks on those people. So somebody has to take responsibility for that, and I don't think a volunteer group of people should do that. We don't have HR support on village council. Or, I mean, in village government, we don't have an HR person. So that would fall totally on our village manager.
So just to clarify, you mean, not solely volunteers, but...
Right, certainly there will be volunteers. I mean, the process that we used with, with Mark is that, is that there were, each, I think each council member selected somebody that they wanted to be on the committee. And, and I think that there was, those people, I think, reviewed their resumes, and then were in, they, they, they were in the interviews. Then we had, we had group interviews with all council members, I think it was a lunch, and those people, and then, and then there was a interview in here, and it included the acting, our acting manager, our, our consultant, all the council members, and the citizens. There was a period when the citizens were here, then there was a period where the citizen committee left, and it was just council. And then there was a public forum, where, I think it was all on the same day, because most of the candidates were coming from, a couple of the candidates were coming from a distance. So it all happened in one day, and then we did a public forum where everybody could come and ask questions in A and B. So, I mean, I thought, I thought it was a good process, I thought that it was, it allowed, all of the resumes were made available, like I said, we'll probably get 50, I think we got 50 last time, 45, 50. All of those are available for review, but we did use the, we did use the, the, our consultant and also John Whiteover, who was our interim BM at the time, to kind of narrow those down. And I think Lori might have...
What they did, what they did was they tiered them.
Right.
They said, they sort of created a, an order, but we got everything, but they said, there were people, you get, anytime you, you have a job, you're going to get about, at least about a third of them are going to be really unqualified, don't, there's no way they could do the job, they, they, they just don't meet the standards in any way, even creatively, right? And then, and then there was sort of a second tier where you could potentially make a case for them, and then they had them in sort of a first tier where, given the qualifications that we had asked for, those all met that. But then we, we got everything, but they were kind of organized a little bit for us. And then we all read through every, every single one of them, I believe.
So what was the role of this committee that had citizens and council members regarding the consultant out of that?
The consultant basically managed the process. They made sure to get the, the, I think they drafted the, the initial advertisement for us, and got it into the publications that it needed to get into. Did, the, the most important job is doing those background checks, at least as I see it, because you have to be able to start looking into the, of any serious candidates, and I can't remember when that kicked in, it was not, not for all 50 of them, but for some of the, the ones, once the committees had met and started narrowing it down, and once we got it narrowed down to some candidates, they started doing some initial background checks to make sure that there weren't big red flags that would come up from, from Google searching and, and other forms of searching that are available. So you wouldn't be surprised if you have a whole bunch of candidates that all have something so serious that your pool is narrowed before you.
So, so just so I understand, the consultant would presumably write up the description, put it in whatever sources it went out, and then organize the 50 responses in these tiers, then the committee would actually look at probably mostly the top tier, and then the committee would probably choose out four, five, something like that, that they would recommend?
Council did that. Council did that. The, the committee kicked in in the interview process, it's, that's my recollection. I, I don't believe that the committee was vetting the, the individual resumes. It was more a matter of once those resumes were tied down, or were, were kind of drilled down to, I think, five or six, then that's when the committee got involved. And the other thing I would see the consultant doing is, yeah, I think social media will play a much larger role in this, in this search, between Monster and, and Facebook and LinkedIn, so I think that that person would be managing all of that, and, and again, looking towards unconventional alternatives for getting, getting the, the advertisement out there and just outreach, you know, to universities, to, certainly to obviously to, to, through all the municipal government sources, ICMA, International City Managers Associations, those kinds of traditional avenues, and then, again, because of the fact that we think that we know we need to go beyond that.
Right.
And not limit ourselves just to city managers, well, I think we may need somebody that has a different perspective. Jerry, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, and, and that's kind of what the, I remember, because I did serve on committee for the new superintendent in processes similar. The other thing, even though you, you may categorize them in three tiers and so forth, council is free, they may see someone in, in a tier that the consultant didn't feel was the right mix, and you may feel that the artist would be at that option, I mean, to move them up. But it's, it's not a short process, and, and you have to be dedicated, being committee and council, you have to be dedicated from day one to what I'm putting in the time, because there is a lot of...
Yeah, I guess one thing I want to elaborate a little bit more on is, I do want to really think about involving citizens from the beginning. I feel like part of what may make this more attractive than, you know, just sort of a short blurb on the village is, is having something that, you know, potential candidates can link to and really understand what's unique about Yellow Springs and, and get a broader feel for that. And I, I think that's something that could be really important. The other thing I do want to mention is, I think we should consider adding in, when we shortlist candidates, so I know that's at the end, an informal interaction as well. So beyond just a formal forum, something where it can be more of a meet and greet, and we really get to know these candidates on a different level.
And we did that the time before that. I, I actually, we might have done that in both of them, I think that there might have been, you know, and, and a lot of it has to do with, with where these folks are coming from. Now, the, the time before this, I mean, we, we, the guy we hired came from Seattle, so, you know, we had to schedule around bringing him in from that far, so, you know, part of it has to do with that, but I think, I agree, I mean, I think that that's, and that's part of the, the lunch, you know, even though it wasn't with the entire community, it was with the committee, the citizen committee, that was still, again, a more casual kind of interaction. Sue?
I'm Sue Atandra, and I need to make sure that I'm hearing correctly. Do I understand that you would be looking to people who might not have government or municipal administrative experience? And if that's true, could you please explain the rationale for that? Because I believe that, like other professions, municipal management is a special area of expertise, and an experienced manager can bring in all kinds of different experiences in this arena, which someone who perhaps teaches in a university or something would not have, would not be able to bring to the table, although they may know a great deal theoretically. The practical, hands-on experience of being in municipal management, I don't think you can find a duplicate of that kind of experience outside of the field of municipal management. So I would urge you to, to put as one of the requirements or one of your qualifiers, that the person be able to bring some experience to the table of successful municipal management. If they don't have a track record, there's no way to really know how they would be able to perform in this setting. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thanks Sue. I, I think the thinking was probably the closest non-municipal government position would be potentially somebody who had, had managed a, a nonprofit. I, I don't know that we were necessarily thinking of academia as much as we were thinking somebody that at least had management experience of a nonprofit. I, I agree with you that it is going, it would be a stretch. I think part of our thinking is that, is that we're struggling to find a fit here, which we're, this community is, is, it, it's, it's been difficult to find a fit, and we're, so we're looking at, is there, is there a way to look a little bit more broadly at the position and the candidates to try to bring in different kind of talent? You know, it's something that Kent actually said at the last meeting, that, that the ICMA doesn't have specific, a...
Accrediting.
...credentialing for that very reason, because they recognize that there are a number of different talents and educational things that, that a manager can bring to the table, and it doesn't have to be strictly somebody in public administration. Is that, am I, okay. Yeah, we were thinking somebody that had some, who had executive experience of some level, where they have been in charge of a large budget of a significant sized organization, working with a strong board, which would be, you know, some form of corporate or nonprofit management, that they would have to understand. I guess part of us, we were thinking, looking at somebody like Mark Roosevelt, never had any experience with university administration before. He came in from a high, from, as a superintendent of, of schools, I believe, in his last round. So, or at least he did, yeah, at least that's my recollection. So we were thinking that while we would, I think, it's not that different from how we... So we were thinking that while we would, I think it's not that different from how we advertised this the last time. We did take that same position last time. I am absolutely positive that we didn't require a degree in municipal or in public administration. Any other thoughts or questions for citizens?
Finishment. I know that the process of hiring a manager requires selection by each of you about that candidate. What I would urge, since we have a history in the past six, eight years of relatively unsuccessful management relationships, that this council do some homework in some business about what you're about, the way you work with the manager, what you see that interaction to be, so that when you make these decisions, you have somebody who understands what you're about, not just your understanding of their about. It won't work otherwise. I don't believe so. I think there's homework at this end.
Thanks, Alice.
Yeah, that's a great point. And, you know, I know, at least for me, it's really important that we form a leadership team and that there is a real strong collaboration on both ends. So thanks for bringing that up.
Well, I think, so is council in agreement that we will search for a consultant? That, I mean, we need to search for a consultant. We need to get names. We need to, so before we do that, we need to agree that, we'd like to agree that that's the route we're going to take.
Yeah, I think we need somebody to manage the process.
So, yeah.
But I also think, you know, we should vet that consultant.
Right, absolutely.
Because, you know, you've allowed stuff down on Bay Harbor, and they're not able to perform. So I think we should use the same due diligence and pick a consultant that we're going to manage.
You know, I'm not sure that it doesn't probably fall, come up to the amount of money where we need a, we don't need to send out an RFP. I mean, I think it can be potentially, although I would like a broader search. You know, I would like the name of the person from the schools. Any other names, Kent, any, you know, I mean, Don Vermillion, who we used before, could be in the mix. You know.
Would it make sense for us to appoint a subcommittee of council, two people who wanted to work on organizing, getting, collecting names, and maybe even starting to think about collecting ideas about process that they can start putting together maybe a kind of proposal?
I think that makes some sense, yeah.
What we're looking for, and what we're looking for in the consultant, and what we're looking for in terms of process. So.
Yes.
Do we have a place to begin?
Yes, I think that's good.
I'm pretty interested in that.
I am. Two new people, though. Yeah. I think it would probably be good to have a new council member.
Oh, absolutely.
Existing council member, honestly, one that's, wouldn't you think?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I think we have, it has to, I think, one new, one new person and one existing.
Jerry, since, do you want, can you do that?
Yeah.
You guys is.
I have.
Yeah, okay. That's right, when I had a broken arm.
I mean, just because, you know, we have two, you know, we're going to collect that.
Right.
Sure.
From everybody. Right, it's just that to gather, it can only be the two of you gathering, you know, working with Kent. And, you know, we also, our solicitor is a resource. Our old interim manager, John Whitehofer, is a great resource. So there are a number of resources that you can reach out to. And I will probably reach out to John Whitehofer. I mean, he knows, I mean, people know we're looking. We've already had people express interest, so. Okay, so.
Did we agree on?
Rock, paper, scissors?
Well, what do you think? Well, I mean, I guess maybe why I will push it a little bit is I did a lot of hiring when I ran my business for 10 years, and I worked with consultants before, when we hired management positions, so.
So.
Maybe that's.
Sounds good to me. Is that okay, Mary Ann?
That's okay, and I would like to have input.
Yes.
We'll all have input. Okay, great.
Now, do we have a time frame, do you want us to report back?
I mean, I would hope, let's see, what is it? It's the, you know, we're going to run into the holidays, and I think that the decision is, are we, is there any possibility we're going to get an advertisement? We're going to get anything out there before the holidays? If we don't get that out within the next three weeks, I think we should just wait till after the first of the year and not even have it out there.
Well, I think we should shoot for December 2nd, our next meeting, to have, you know, at least a proposal for potential consultants, if not, you know. And then also, I think, I'd like to think a little bit more about how the citizens committee can be involved from the beginning, if that's, if there's potential for that.
So possibly having the consultant on board by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, so clearly, that's all, if that's all we're talking about, which is fine, then we're looking at sending out the call for resumes after the first of the year, which probably makes sense anyway, makes more sense. And once we start talking about it and it gets out there, people may start sending resumes anyway. Next is review of the budget schedule, and we did great tonight because we passed the temporary budget for the first quarter of 2014, which we have to do just for the auditor. But we were also, this is a calendar that was put together by Laura before she left, that actually had our first budget hearing tonight on the capital and general fund budget, and then another one on special revenue funds on December 2nd and enterprise funds on December 16th. Clearly, that's not going to happen. I had talked with Kent earlier, and it's his preference that we wait for a new finance director before we start the formal budget process. So I, you know, I don't know if Kent has anything to report on that, if he has a tentative time when that might happen, or if we just want to wait till maybe the next meeting to talk about it.
I'm down to the last step before making an appointment, and I'm going to talk about that in executive session tonight. So I'm hoping by early December, we can have that position filled. And so by mid-December, we can actually start working.
Counsel, how are you all feeling? I mean, the other thing, you know, the first three meetings in January, there's one special meeting, but there's a second review of each of those funds already scheduled. So we could even potentially wait until January to start the budget, the actual budget hearings. And give, so give staff the rest of the year to finish the budget.
You know, we've got two holidays coming up. Kent's going to talk to us about the new, his recommendations. Want to at least give that person at least a week or two.
Well.
So I'd say first of the year is, you know, and I think it'll go pretty quick, because if I'm correct, Kent has, and folks working on it, which is quite a while also, it should work pretty quick.
So is, is counsel is satisfied with just waiting to begin the process till after the first of the year? And then we can get, we can get a formal.
We don't have a lot of choice.
Yeah, we can get a formal schedule from staff as soon as that's available. Okay, any comments from citizens? Then the next discussion is the next steps for the Center for Business and Education project. At the last meeting, we had, excuse me, two pieces of legislation on our agenda. One, to authorize the execution of a letter of engagement with Squire Sanders with the bond council, and another to authorize the execution of agreement with the underwriter. The first one for bond council was tabled, and the second one failed for lack of a second. And so it was when we were planning the agenda for this meeting, the two new council members, it seemed that this would be a good meeting to have a discussion about next steps and to how we were going to move forward. I know that there are lots of folks here from Community Resources that we can hear from, and they also provided some materials in the packet. So I, maybe I'd hear from counsel how they want to move forward.
Yeah, do we have to make a motion or something that did it off the table and get it back into the discussion? And if so, I'd like to make that motion.
Well, I mean, if we were making, huh, this works well now.
Paul's over there doing something.
Nice.
That helps.
Keep your finger in that socket.
I mean, my understanding is if we would be making a motion, it would be on the issue of bond council. And so I don't know if we should maybe start with some discussion.
Yeah, my understanding, if we were going to do that, that should have really been in the packet, particularly when we've got two new people. So my understanding is that, just from the agenda, that this was really next steps here, and that we would then put it on the agenda for the next meeting. That was my understanding of what we decided the last meeting.
Right, I mean, that's, and that's what was, that's how it was presented and thought of in agenda planning, in the agenda planning meeting, feeling that it might be a little preliminary.
So we don't need a motion?
No, not yet, I don't think so. I mean, and the discussion is a general discussion, really, not specifically about the bond council.
Yeah, I have some thoughts, questions, concerns. And I've talked to probably about a half a dozen people in the community who I feel have expertise. I have some conversations scheduled with some of the community resource people. I'd like to see some things, some questions put out on the table for council, especially as a new council person, as well as the community, since this is a, this is a big deal we're talking about. For example, if we move forward with funding the infrastructure for the CBE, once we start that process for the CBE, what is the role of the village then? Not, I'm not talking about the building of the infrastructure. I mean, what will the role of the village be regarding the CBE? What will the role of Community Resources be? I'm not asking to have that question answered now, but I'm saying that's, I have like, I think, 10 questions and concerns that I've listed, that I think it would be good for us to get some more information out and to have some of the concerns that have been raised in the community addressed, either by Community Resources, or by village government, or by whatever source. I know that the Jim McKey group is planning, I believe, a forum. I don't know when that is, I don't know what the form of it is. And I don't know that we necessarily want to wait for that. I guess it sort of depends on what it is. But I think that at the council table, we could be providing some more information through Community Resources, as well as through our own discussion, so that, assuming we move ahead, the community and we are assured that we really know what we're doing.
I think that's good. And I, and that's the kind of thing I was, I was thinking that we could do is, you know, share some of those questions. And I think that some of them were probably very easy for Community Resources to respond to. I believe that they are in process of gathering quite a bit of information. In just a minute, I'm going to ask Jerry to come up and talk about the forum and what other information they're gathering. So, I mean, I guess the thing, you said you have 10 different questions. I mean, I, you know, how that many? I mean, if each council member has 10 questions, that could get, you know, that's going to start to get cumbersome. So I guess, how are we going to, we've got to figure out a way to manage that, plus take into account individual citizens' questions, and how those are going to be weighed and answered to.
I guess, what is, what are we, just sort of the general frame, what are we assuming if we go forward, this is going to look like? What, as I said, what is the role of the village government going to be, and who's going to undertake that role? What is Community Resources anticipating? Well, I don't, I won't go through all the questions I have, but one of the biggest concerns that I have is, can we really expect to just put an infrastructure in and then not have any buildings? And anticipate that a business is going to be able to come in and build a building? That's probably one of the biggest questions I have. And in my discussions with people who I think have an expertise, mostly I've been hearing, it'd be really great if we're going to go forward to get a building in there, get a really, something small probably, get some funding for it. I don't know how we would fund that, or who would do that, but that's an example of.
You know, that's, those are good questions. I mean, we would, you know, I think it's been laid out pretty well that the village would be responsible for the infrastructure. The own, the property has already been deeded over to the village. So that part of it, by virtue of the fact that it is our infrastructure and that the loan, or that the grants, the Army Corps grant is in our name, then we would be responsible for that infrastructure. The actual development of the parcels would be the responsibility of Community Resources. And I guess we would need to hear from them about what their vision is of how they see that developing. I mean, will they do it themselves? Will they, will they work with the developer? Those are the kinds of things that I think are, need to get on the table. Those are the next steps to explain how is this process going to happen, once the infrastructure is there? So, I mean, Jerry, do you want to?
Jerry Sutton, a mere citizen. First question. Five December, Presbyterian Church, 7:00 for the forum. And invited by the Jim McKey sub-group that is working this project. My understanding is it will be similar to the format everyone enjoyed at the candidates' night. Couple of statements, plenty of opportunity for opponents and proponents to make statements. Pretty extensive Q and A period from, for the audience who participate. That's about as much as I know of.
That's 5:00 P.M.?
Seven.
Southern P.M.? Oh, I'm sorry.
December 5th.
Yes, December 5th, thank you. I just want to make sure it's on.
Are, is the group planning on having people who are, who have expertise, including or not including Community Resources? Or is this totally question and answer for people in Community Resources? Or do you know?
Could you be a little more specific?
Well, my understanding was that there were some people.
Probably won't have any bank concern.
My understanding was that there were going to be some people with some expertise who are going to be talking about the project to whom questions could be addressed. Is that incorrect?
I mean, what?
Just the history.
My understanding is, you know, if you have someone to review the history, put everybody in the same baseline, similar to the paper that was in your package tonight. I think there's another time slot for current status. Someone will say, okay, here's where we are. And then the future, someone will be projecting, okay, what, how do we do this in the future? But I need more information if you, as to experts. It's Jim's group that is convening this. We'll have our CR team, board members, past board members, et cetera, there. But if there is some requirement for specific expertise, I'd be interested in knowing what that is, and I'm sure. that is, and I'm sure Jim's group, if they want to recruit somebody, they probably want to ask that information.
I, just as a suggestion, an industrial wielder, maybe someone like Montgomery County's Director of Development who could talk about the process they use for attracting industry and what kinds of support they have to offer, is that what you're talking about, Mary Ann?
Yeah, Kate Williams, having Kate Williams from Green County come again would give me an idea.
What?
Maybe someone from a park that has been successful to talk about if they did, what it looks like. Maybe also, I know I've talked to Bruce Cornet, who suggested a park outside of Cincinnati that he thought was well designed, I mean, maybe some people could actually go to some places, citizens, council, Community Resources can talk about, bring back information.
I mean, I know Springfield has had a couple of pretty successful projects.
Actually, I think Tom Franzen, who's the Economic Development Director of, in Springfield, might be someone to reach out to also. And that's.
He was in the article.
Yeah, I know, I'll, I can get you that information. Yeah, I think it would be good to have a community or a, an Economic Development Director, Government Economic Development Director, either Tom Franzen from Clark or Pete Williams from Green, I think would be two good choices.
Okay. It's been my experience over the last couple of weeks since I raised my head in this, that people can generate questions faster than I can answer them. So I would request that the council consolidate their questions and requests and have a degree of specificity if you have some requirements, may want to pass them to the convenor of the forum and myself as well, if there's something of a general nature, to see if it fits within the format envisioned. And, you know, this is, this is not a design review on the ultimate building that's going to be there, I don't think that's what they're, and it's not a tutorial on how do you finance a building, I don't think that's within the parameters. But if those are the things you want, please consolidate the list and give to Jim's group and myself. Is that an unreasonable request?
No.
Probably citizens could do that as well, is that true?
You are the elected officials of the citizens, I look for your list of questions. All citizens will have an adequate time to come, if they want to engage Jim's group, there are members of Jim's group in the community and they can come up and table their questions within. I don't have enough time, I've handled, fielded a lot of people's questions on this, I'm not going to be in the process of trying to answer every possible question, conceivable question that anybody can have. That's the reason for the forum, people should be there, voice their questions and see if people can respond.
I think that's.
And certainly citizens should feel free to send us questions, so we have a sense for the questions we're hearing over and over again, that we don't feel like we currently have good answers to. I find it really helpful to say, okay, I'm not sure how to answer that question, so I want to make sure that's exactly the question that I want to make sure that I get a chance to ask, so they can help me with it. And I got to say, Community Resources people have reached out to meet with me and we spent some time talking, and so I want to thank you, because I know you, all the members of Community Resources are getting lots of questions directed their way, so thanks for your time.
Mary Ann Yobson?
I don't think so. I mean, it seems that.
Thanks, Eric.
Go ahead.
I was just saying, thanks, go ahead.
So it seems, what I'd like to propose for the next meeting, for the December 2nd meeting, is that we untable the resolution 2013-43 authorizing bond council and then also have resolution 2314-44 about, for the underwriter, have both of those, vote on those at the December 2nd meeting, because that will provide information that we need, that that isn't making a commitment to borrowing money, that is making the commitment to exploring what our financial, what the financial realities of project are going to be. And I would like to ask Kent to, I had communicated with Rachel McKinley, our treasurer, I would definitely like to have her involved in this, I would like to have her input on what is our best means of financing this project. And so we'll do that at the December 2nd meeting and then also, you know, I don't feel like I have any questions, honestly, I mean, but if Mary Ann, Brian, anybody that has questions, maybe that we can vet questions, share them ahead of time in the packet and then decide on, say, a handful of questions or 10 questions, I mean, decide on questions that we will submit to the McKee group before, a couple of days before the meeting, so that they can have some preparation.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. Yeah, I want to emphasize two things. One, to kind of connect to what Karen was saying, we do need to get the information and get that piece of the process going to make the ultimate decision about the investment, and that's going to take some time, both securing that council, getting that information, and again, it doesn't commit us to the ultimate decision, but I do believe that those can go in parallel with the other information gathering. I also can understand, I think it's safe to say Jerry's frustration, which is, you know, that it's, it's good to finish our due diligence, but I do think we need to be specific about what the questions are that need to be answered. You know, I think we've, we've had two months of the election and we talked about the CBE for a long time, and, you know, again, there are different issues about risk and, you know, not everybody feels good about certain levels of risk, but, you know, if we can, with citizens' help, get some focus on what is missing, then that would be great, and then I think, you know, everybody would feel much better about the decision that we ultimately make.
So, I'm sorry, Sue.
I would like to remind you of this document, what it says, that I've seen in it anyway, is that there's already been a great deal invested of time and money and interest and village people's resources, volunteers' resources. It's been going on for at least a decade, and during that time, economic development has always been at the top of the list of what we needed in this community, to improve our tax base, to improve our revenue stream, and to be able to somehow return us to the glory days when we had so many services and so many helpers to give our quality of life that we had had during that time, because there were businesses here. And if we don't have businesses here, we're not going to have the things that businesses bring to the community. And my understanding is, other than some small locations, this is the only place for businesses to grow into or to come from outside. And I think that if we, if we continue to try to answer every issue that everyone might, you know, anyone might have, the time will go by, that extra half million is going to be lost, and we still won't have the revenue stream that people have consistently said we need, we need business, we need jobs. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just a reminder, for people who have been here before, I usually, we usually put a three-minute timer on, so we usually put a, we usually put a three-minute timer on citizen comments, and so I just, I run a little timer here. It doesn't mean you can't finish your thought, but it helps keep, keep things moving along and provides some impetus to be concise, as Sue just was, which I thank you for, so you're always concise. Go ahead.
So, thank you and welcome to the new village council members. Thank you for your service. I'm Rebecca Potter and I live on Corey Street. I'd just like to make some brief comments. I understand from the last speaker, from what Sue said, that there is a concern about the 500,000 lost, but I really appreciate the council's diligence and patience in this matter. We can also see this as 700,000 saved if we don't go forward. And I think it is a time to see that we have a chance of being good stewards of our taxpayers' money, to rethink an issue that looked good a few years ago and may look good again in another few years. The infrastructure will not be wasted, the effort will not be wasted, but is this the time, right now, to do this investment? And I'd say no. I think we can even strengthen private business partners, revamp the model so it better fits what young entrepreneurs are doing today, and let the new zoning work. I think the new zoning will give lots of opportunities in the village for people to open small cottage businesses. So please, when you are conducting that December 5th forum, I hope to be there, consider what the village wall would be if our optimistic vision sadly did not come through, if we were faced with an empty place and a debt to pay. I think that's what a lot of citizens are concerned about, and they see a lot of opportunities for this community now to use that infrastructure money towards other kinds of infrastructure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Roy?
My name's Roy Walls, and a few years ago, I went through a very protracted exercise to keep my business in town, Health Data Solutions. And really, our options were so limited, there was one place we could move and we took it, and there were lots of folks at our heels to scoop that from Yellow Springs. And I think the thing that really concerns me the most in this discussion is how short-sighted a lot of it is. This is a decision that we should be thinking in terms of a 20-year or a 50-year horizon, and if we want to catch the next wave, it's way out in the middle of the ocean. You can't start preparing for that three months before it hits. We've got to lay a basic infrastructure, we have to have a place for people to come to, because, you know, to sort of play off what they said in the news, you know, if they build it, well, they don't build it, they certainly won't come. If there is no place for us to grow into, no place for people to land, they will go to the parts that are bringing, building in Springfield, because Springfield is looking ahead and building them and committing the resources, decades ahead of when they're going to be occupied. So I think we've got to really look at, at very long-term with this, otherwise, the consequence of not doing it is that we continue our march toward the bedroom community for Rock Pad Air Force Base. That is really the alternative vision, that we will settle for ourselves if we don't find a way to get people to establish companies here that can actually establish a broad base for jobs, of wide, of a wide income latitude. Anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Robert. Anyone else? Christine?
Yes, hi, Christine Roberts, and I do appreciate what Roy Walls just said, and of course, it's all true. My question is about using taxpayer dollars to get there. If it is our goal to raise our tax, our tax cash, then draining it is a little, well, it's the word, the word of the day is risk. And if you do look at, I want to thank Diane Schittister for the excellent article that she wrote about, if you read through it, I've been saying these same things since 2007. This, yes, sure, it would be great to have manufacturing in Yellow Springs, I'm not opposed to that, but manufacturing has left the state of Ohio. It's gone. And many people will argue that manufacturing has left the country, okay? Gone. I mean, maybe there is some movement in that direction in the country somewhere, but a lot of, a lot of our businesses have gone to Georgia from Ohio. So what the article has said, in quoting economists in all of the institutions around us, they're all saying the same thing, what I've been saying since 2007, that I would love to have a business come, but there's no businesses here to come, you can't attract a business, can't put on high yellow shoes and red lipstick and send an Economic Development Director down to Dayton to attract business. That's not, it's not there, there is not. And I spoke to her about this and she agreed, she says there's nothing there to attract. She said it was a ridiculous job that she was hard to do, that's what she told me. There was nothing for her to do. Okay, Karen, there was, there was nothing for her to do. She told me this herself, that there, that there is no piece of a pie that you can go and get. She described it as a little tartlet that they put on the table, and 50 Economic Development Directors died for it, okay? And, okay, so now, Karen, you're saying that you want to invite Government Economic Development Directors to come to the forum? And what I'm telling you is that, that Government Economic Development Directors, this is the only thing they know, is build a Congress Park. These are not the best advisors for this project. And in conclusion, let me just say that, to quote the economist that was, the people of the village are being asked to assume the burden of the risk associated with post-development, but even in the best and most optimistic results, they were still only going to receive a fraction of the presumed benefits. I look at these projects in terms of contracts, and I see this as a really bad deal for the people of Yellow Springs, to use taxpayer money for this project when this is the corporate sector's responsibility. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Anyone else? So, oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Lisa Abel, and always associated with Community Resources and retired a couple of years ago from that group, but I have been participating in some discussions. And what occurs to me with this proposal is that you all are in a different situation and a different relationship than you have been in the past with CBE and with Community Resources. And you're now being asked to be the major funder, and, and I don't think there's a process, there's not a precedent, so that is something for you all to consider. And what I'd like, really, there's two questions I think need to be answered by you. One is, just what Christine was saying, is use of village funding okay for this project? That's just a basic, fundamental question you all need to get an answer to. And then from my perspective on the discussions between Community Resources and council and community, what is needed for you all to be able to make that final vote? And I'd be happy to help facilitate discussions, to participate in discussions, to do whatever I can to help find those answers for you. And I know you won't have 100% of your answers, I'm hoping you get 80%, and we'll see what happens.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Lisa.
Michael, this will be our last comment.
I think Roy was dead on when he said that it's really hard to find any place to do business in town. business in town. Years ago, when I had decided to do ceramics full-time, I spent a year and a half looking for someplace. And at that time, Joe Scott was the village planner, and there was vague talk about a commerce park out there. So, you can wait a long time to find someplace. That's on the one side. I do think it's awkward for council to feel like it's backed, backed up against the deadline looking at a grant that may be lost, or what Chris is saying, oh, be careful when you start committing the people's money to a project, then there will be another, other orders of urgency to get the place full. And when that kind of pressure comes to bear, I think you might end up moving businesses in that don't fit the character of Yellow Springs. In other words, if you're not in a position to, to move slowly and incrementally, you may make rash decisions in haste. And I would remind the council that there is a big contingent of people in town who are pacifists and who would object to seeing a lot of industries locate in the new commerce park, if it comes to pass, that are committed to military contract work. And you could say, well, that's the only game there is, but that's not true because EnviroFlight is right here, it's growing, it's proving itself to be a success, and it is not about anything concerned with warfare. So, there are alternatives out there, very interesting ones, and with the emergence of EnviroFlight, there's a very strong chance that others, as the news gets out, will say, oh, now there is an interesting little bird to locate, and we don't know where these people would come from. But when we go out trying to recruit, I think we ought to be clear about what is the range of businesses we're, we're looking to find, and what's, what are some of the best ways to do that? And the last thing you might do is go over to Antiochiana and find out how it is that Vernae ended up coming to Yellow Springs. It's a very interesting story. Okay? And if you want to know the answer, I'll tell you privately.
Thanks, Michael.
And your last name, Director?
Jones.
Michael Jones.
One minute. Can you do it one minute?
Yeah, I can.
Are you still have to come up?
Yeah. Phyllis, I'd like to add.
Bring them out.
I'd like to make a point about council's role historically in promoting and supporting various businesses in the village. There is historical precedence for this. In 85, 86, and 87, council funded public relations consultants to encourage business, business here and also encourage young families with children to come to the village. Very specifically for those two reasons, council paid money to do that, they wanted to develop both businesses, and they did. If you look back at Yellow Springs in 85, you will see a downtown that had stores for rent, that had businesses that were foundering. So, I, I think before you, you fall into the trap of believing that this is all new, it's not all new. The order of magnitude is larger. There's no question about that now, but this is not new for a council to do, and I just think you need to stop. You might like to have that historical point of view.
Thanks, Phyllis.
Thanks, Phil. And actually, I feel like I want to discuss at least one more thing. I thought maybe Kent might be able to share with us a little bit about, you know, kind of what Phyllis was, was talking about, his precedents in the past for what the village has done related to economic development.
Yeah, that's my, that's my sole value is the repository of ancient. When the college was starting to founder financially, the village, partly out of loyalty to the college, but also in the interest of shoring up the village's finances, did a lot of things to help the college. We let them get way behind in their utility bill, we bought the golf course as a way to pass money on to the college. We said we were preserving green space, which we were, but really it was a way to give several hundred thousand dollars to the college. The college wanted the Fells Building, but had no wanting to buy it, so the village bought the Fells Building and held it for several years and then resold it to the college. And we've done, we are laying speculators. We own the parking lot up next to HAC Service. We own open space, we own several farms that we lease. We're big time in the real estate speculation business and been for decades.
Thanks, Ken.
Oh, and we were reminded recently that the real reason behind this, according to Dan Young, is to sell more ice cream.
I definitely understand what it's like to work on a project and put your heart and soul in it and have the village reject it. I've experienced that, so I get that. At the same time, and, and because I have a fair amount of experience in looking at land in the village and what it's used for, I know that there's very little land available in the village for commercial and business development, and that concerns me. I don't think that this is a build it and they will come. I think that if we move forward with the CBE, that the village government needs to take a stand and have this be a goal and have, and have some role in this, not just sit back and say, okay, we're going to throw out this $500,000 and put in infrastructure. For example, Ellen Hoover had sent development policy that she was, kind of things, she was suggesting that I, it's my understanding, that she thought that the village would be putting in place, or at least having Community Resources put in place. I think we, if we're going to do this, I think that we owe it to the citizens and particularly the citizens who are opposed to it, to say, look, we've looked at these, we've looked at these questions, and we understand this is a risk, but we think that this is worth moving forward, and we've answered your questions as best we can. An example, like, this isn't going to get filled out in a year or two. I would, I would anticipate five to 15 years that, that. And, and in that case, the village would be paying principal on that money that we put in, or interest at least, I don't know if we'd be paying. So, I think it's important for the village to look at this and say, okay, and if it fills out in five years, we're probably going to have to be putting out this much money, or 15, this much. At least, at least citizens can say, okay, the village government, they're looking at the risks and they're going to do it. And so, when I'm asking questions, I'm asking questions and looking at things from a standpoint of, I'd like this to work, and I think it's reasonable to ask those questions and to take the time that it takes to, to have a discussion about it.
Thanks. Quickly, Paul.
So, I'm a member of the McKee Group, and I'm working on the forum and the role of cameraman. But I've heard a lot of discussion tonight. I think we can continue it there at the forum, and we're looking for speakers on the panel that are opposed to December, so we have that viewpoint. So, I'll give you a phone number to call if you're interested in, in being on that panel.
Thanks.
Yeah, so let's wrap this up. So, what we've decided is December 2nd meeting, we will, we will untable and we will, we will vote on the, the two resolutions related to financing, bond council, and underwriter, so we can start to gather information about what this financing model will look like. We'll hear from our treasurer and we'll have, we'll share for the packet questions that any of us might have, that we will then share, we will then agree to and share with the McKee Group for the forum, so that they could, or Community Resources, so that they can be preparing. And just to be clear, the forum is not a council forum, it is a, and it's not even a Community Resources forum, it's a James McKee Group forum, so it's a, it's a private, it's a private function. I guess the one other thing that we might want to take a minute to address is, do we all want to be there, and do we need to call it, do we need to convene it as a, at least our portion of it as a, a public meeting, or at least advertise? Would that be adequate to just advertise?
Well, would it, I'm not clear as to what your portion of it is.
Well, we're just us being there. I mean, do we?
We can, we can show up and we can not speak. We can listen.
Just not be engaged.
But we can't necessarily like.
Answer questions.
We can ask questions. We can ask questions. We can't debate. I mean, our legal counsel is in the back nodding. So, the question is, do we feel like that would be constraining if we're, if that's our role, or is that sufficient for this sort of meeting?
Or we could potentially advertise it. I mean, that would be the easiest thing to do, is just advertise the meeting, that, that council was going to be at that meeting. And would that be adequate?
I don't, I don't know that would, Chris, I'd throw that your way because I will not be taking minutes at that meeting right now.
Chris Conner, Village Listener. Would the event be filmed? How would we preserve it for purposes of public record?
Paul's filming.
If it were filmed, I think you could do it that way with adequate notes.
Thank you, Matt.
Why don't we do that? Then you, then if that is what you want, I'll need to notice it, well, ahead of that December 2nd, so that's it, that's a yes?
Yes, December the 5th.
December 5th.
Well, December 2nd's the meeting at which I assume you will have that list, you'll congeal your list of questions, which will then be sent on to.
But, but I don't think questions need, I mean, I think all that needs to be noticed is the meeting.
Right.
And then that would be in the, in that week's, the 5th is, is that, that's a Thursday night, I think?
Yeah, we need to be a week prior.
So, in that, oh, the week prior, okay.
I do want to clarify one point on that, is that, just to be clear, even though we would call it a public meeting, I, I'm not anticipating the council would engage in any what would be considered form of deliberation, the way that you might hear. You're going to save that for the official council meeting where there would be a vote later on and.
Absolutely, yes.
Consideration of whether or not to pass the legislation.
Right.
That's all right. I just wouldn't want anything to be said or done that would cause any confusion.
Well, by noticing a public meeting, even though you will not be deliberating, it allows a little bit more freedom and, because people will know that you're there and that you may be asking questions and participating in a listening manner, and as long as people don't infer positions that they have because of the nature of your questions, again, I think that's fine.
And I just want to say finally, I really appreciate the discussion that we have here and everybody participating. I think it's very important that we do, as Mary Ann said, you know, make a careful decision. So, thanks a lot.
Moving on to new business, the, there was a piece of legislation related to Glen Forest Cemetery. We're actually going to be discussing that in executive session because it is related to real estate. It will come back to the next meeting in the form of legislation. It relates to the fact to inform the citizens. It relates to the fact that the township has taken over Glen Forest Cemetery, the, both the, the older part of the, that's just north of town on the west side of the road and also the new section that's on the east side of the road. And part, there is a parcel, a small parcel of land that's in the village, so we're talking about a transaction with the township that will confer that to them, but we'll come back, as I said, at the next meeting with that legislation. I think most of the council members are aware, but we did talk about it, Mary Ann or your guys working. So, we'll move on to the manager's report. Kent, is anything you want to review or add to the report you have in the packet?
I want to apologize for not being more responsive during your questions about the supplemental appropriations. I was gone Friday, and Nicole, our finance director, and Judy worked together to prepare the legislation, and the legislation and the explanation got separated in the process of me shuffling my notes. Nicole had told me some of those things. For example, the overspending in the solid waste fund was because we actually paid for November and December of 2012 and 2013, so that, anyway, they did make, and I thank you for being so, showing so much initiative and taking care of things while I was not here to do it.
Oh, all I did was xerox things.
You did so well. Anything else?
Just, just a note, we have a policy that goes way, way back. Somebody asked me about streetlights on Cannon Hamilton Way. In the past, our policy has been that we only install streetlights when we're asked to do it by residents, because some people prefer not to have. And so, in fact, we had, we had to take some out one time that we put in on our own initiative. So, so the residents of Cannon Hamilton Way have given me a petition saying we want lights, and so we're going to work on that. But just if anybody here is in an area without streetlights and you want them, if you will give me a petition, we'll consider. We have one street in town that's exactly split 50/50, and I've told them unless they can come up with 51%, so I think, I think one of the families has stopped using birth control and hopes of swinging the ball. If you want a street light, that's our policy.
No birth control, streetlights? I don't know. Clerk's report?
And on that note, welcome to new council members and welcome back to Karen. The, really, the big thing to let you know is that American Legal is now up to date through July of 2013, so that happens annually, takes a really long time to get everything on, but it's now up to date to that point, and we should be actually rolling at this point because we've paid for the ability to roll the legislation as it comes, comes along, so that, that'll be helpful.
Judy, is the interactive zoning code act, alive right now? Because I looked at, looked at and didn't seem to be the interactive one.
I checked it, I interacted.
Okay.
I didn't interact to any intimate extent, but I went here and there and it seems to be working.
Okay, good. So, the, there is an interactive zoning code that was part of what we got from our consultant. Standing reports, so this will be interesting. We've got a few blanks here, so, you know, I'm not sure, I don't want to take a lot of time talking about assignments, but it would be good if we can kind of decide on, on the open ones and if anybody else wants to make any other changes. And I guess to hear reports, if anybody has reports from the commissions. I know that one of the big things we have to do is to address the four candidates for nomination for HRC too, so maybe we should start with that, Jerry? You want to start with that?
Yes. I think she did that, but we did have two designations, one from Leslie White and the other one was from Patty Downs, I think she's now, Patty's a longtime member of the HRC, so she has decided to retire. And we would hate to see Patty leave. She's, she's been one of the guys who likes to be HRC, but in giving her a lesson leaving, that gave us three vacancies, but I'm glad to say that we have four candidates. And we did revise our ordinance, our organization, so we're going to be able to accept all four of them as candidates. And in order of the applications, resumes received, I'd like to nominate Erin Cole, Corey Johnson, Deborah Wade. Corey Johnson, Deborah Williamson, and Nick Cunningham to be new members to the HRC. The first three would be replacing the outgoing three, and then the final one, Nick, would be a primary, ultimate vote and voting authority when a quorum is needed and so forth. Nick would be a former member in all the discussions and so forth. So I'd like to nominate those four.
Second? Oh, in favor, second place, saying aye?
Aye.
And then one other one, cable access. I found out by looking at my TV that with Yellow Springs, along with a lot of other places, Time Warner has gone to digital. So I made one call. They sent me four boxes. What they told me was that as long as I made the request before the end of December, the boxes were free after December. I think there's going to be a small nominal churn and so forth, but they are very easy to install. So those of you that don't have the cable boxes, just make the phone call, and they came within three days on my phone call, so we'll probably have more to report later as Channel 5 looks into other things with Time Warner. But, you know, I encourage you to get the box, the small... It's called a converter. And I did notice a big difference in the quality of my picture once I put those digital boxes in, so.
Thanks, Jerry. I should have started with Lori, Planning Commission.
Yes, we approved the Hotel for the Barn property, probably a lot of you saw that in the news this week, so that was actually very non-controversial and hopefully is a good sign for the new zoning code. And we also approved a new hair salon up on High Street by Curves in that red building and one of the apartments, putting a small hair salon in. Again, non-controversial, and it looks good.
So I don't really... I didn't attend the last MBRPC meeting, so I don't really have a lot to report, so I think that that's it. Now we really need to spend some time talking about who's going to take what commissions. I will start with myself and say that I will just, at this point, stay on MBRPC, and then I'm certainly available to be alternates on other commissions.
And what does that mean about the chamber?
Well, that one too.
And the Environmental Commission has really been inactive, so I guess I would like to make a motion that unless there's a community impulse to reengage and reinvigorate the Environmental Commission, that it be inactive for the time being.
Second?
All those in favor, second place, aye?
Should we want the discussion?
Discussion, sure, yeah.
I would like to talk to some former members of the commission, and also, I haven't had a chance to look at the purpose statement, mission statement. I prefer to do that before... Unless it's easy to just bring it back on the table.
Do we want to do that? Have you... Should we? I mean, it's getting late, we've got an executive session, should we just hold? I mean, I don't know, the big one is Planning Commission, I think Lori was...
Planning to stay on Planning Commission.
So I think that's the big one. Maybe we can hold off till the next meeting on this so that folks can have an opportunity to...
Well, I think myself and Brian would kind of agree to make some switches. I'd like to... At least do that one.
Yeah, Mary Ann and I talked too, so maybe...
Well, so what are you guys thinking? I mean, so Environmental Commission is one that's maybe a little up in the air, we won't maybe take that action yet, we'll hold until Mary Ann reports back the December 2nd meeting. So what about village mediation?
I'm going to hang out, you know, unless... The other tomorrow, I'd hang out with village mediation. Human relations, I want to turn that over to Brian, unless...
Is that still okay, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and I would like to take on human relation.
And Brian would also wants to take Community Access.
Okay. Energy Board?
I would do that.
Okay.
And CRR, who are you? Community Resources.
I, you know, Economic Sustainability is another one that I consider to be in the same category as Environmental Commission, it hasn't met, it's really inactive. I am... It's not one that I'm willing to take the time to revive, so, Mary Ann, is it something that you're interested in looking at?
It is something that I'm interested in, and once I have a sense of what the village's role and the CBE would be, as well as maybe some other economic metrics, I would be potentially interested in being on that committee if it makes sense to happen.
Okay, okay, then we'll let you look into that. Library Commission?
I'll take that.
Lori, you're going to stay on Regional?
Yeah, I can stay on Regional for a minute.
Okay. So Community Access, we just decided Brian's going to do that, I'll stay Chamber of Commerce and MBRPC, Public Art Commission. Is that one... I mean, my understanding is that, I mean, we just set it up, so I certainly don't want to be disav... Or abandoning it quickly, but I don't think it has actually met. I think it's only met once. Is that something that you're interested in, Brian?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, Mary Ann, I don't know...
I think you have a bigger interest in ideas about it than I do.
Yeah, I would be interested in... I have some ideas about how we might invigorate that commission.
That is one that I would like to be an alternate on.
I could be an alternate to your Miami Valley.
Okay.
Planning. I'd be happy to do that.
Do you need us alternate on planning?
I'd be happy to be the alternate.
And I'd like to be the alternate on the energy.
And I could be alternate on HRC.
Great.
Are you getting all this, Jerry?
Yeah, who's the alternate on HRC? I'm sorry.
Me, okay.
And I'd be alternate on Community Access.
Great.
Perfect. Should somebody be alternate on Community Resources?
I would.
Okay.
I'd be the alternate for my commission.
I'd be well admitted.
Okay, future agenda items. We have the two pieces of legislation for the CBE.
And getting questions?
Questions, the questions, so further discussion on the CBE questions and two pieces of legislation. First reading of ordinance, first reading, this will be an emergency, I believe, 2013-27 for Glen Forest Cemetery. I would like to at least put in the packet the council rules for consideration, we talked about that this morning at the meeting, at our meeting during the orientation. We'll just introduce it to you two and then bring it back maybe to a future meeting that isn't quite so busy. Kent, are you aware of any legislation or any discussions other than...
Well, I have one that I think we need to address early next year, and that's sidewalks. And I'm not talking... Well, I'm talking to... I'm talking about streets, but also, I understood correctly, we took on sidewalks throughout the community, and we've got some real issues. So we need to talk about it.
And some of that can happen during budget discussion too.
Yeah.
So we've got some real...
Really good.
And Jerry and Brian, were you bringing a list of consultants?
Yes.
Oh.
And hopefully some ideas about, you know, preliminary strategy.
So we should all be getting you ideas or concerns that we have.
Please, yeah.
Hiring process. And that would include citizens, of course. That would include citizens, of course. Sorry, I forgot to speak up. Giving them information or concerns or ideas that you have about the hiring process for the village manager.
Can I have a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of current litigation and of the hiring of a public official?
So who?
Second.
Judy, would you please call the wall?
Good to know.
Yes.
Asman.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Pausch.
Yes.
McQueen. Yes. Okay, we'll see you in a minute, break, guys. Thank you all.
Thank you.